I call the Planning Commission meeting for August 18, 2022 to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Small?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Excused.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting July 28, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop at 8621 Station Street. Is that applicant here? Please stand up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do at 8621 Station.
Name is David Cavelli. I've been a Mennor resident for almost 35 years, and at this 8621 Station Street, I would like to run a very small automobile repair shop.
Try to get into that mic a little bit more. I know you're tall.
Okay. I've been an automotive technician for 44 years. I ran a repair business in Euclid for 32 years. I'm 62 years old, getting ready to retire, but I still have a few things that I need to take care of with my customers, so I'd like to open up a repair business at this location. Very small, very part-time, but I'd like to continue on for a couple more years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I know, Mr. Chairman, we have nine conditions that we recommended to the Planning Commission, the only other draw of your attention to the site plan that the applicant just submitted this evening in response to the conditions that were proposed. That's it.
You've read the staff report and agree with the conditions?
I'm sorry, sir.
You've read the staff report and agree with all the conditions?
Yes.
Is there anything from the commission members?
Just one comment.
Mr. Varga?
You might want to locate your dumpster location in line with one of your two driveways because they're like the back end, and we're going front and pick it up and then leave.
Well, actually, we've said it there because, as you can see, it goes all the way around, and the loader is on the side.
Oh, okay.
So he comes right in, loads it, and then takes it away.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tiedemann?
Just real quick, when I was there, there was a lot of, in the one corner of the property, there was like a car under a tarp. There was a bunch of stuff just stacked up. Is that going to be cleaned up?
Right. Yes, absolutely. None of that stuff is mine. It's a previous owner, so I'm taking care of it.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the nine conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a conditional use permit to allow a reduction of the required buffer adjacent to an R2, single-family residential district at 8505 Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here?
We talked about Ganley.
Yes, yeah. But right now, we're just going to do the conditional use permit on the buffer. So give us your name and address, and let's talk about a buffer.
My name is Paul Circo. I'm the project director at Volkan, located at 3142 Prospect Avenue. We are asking for reduced buffer along the north and east side of the property, along the residential properties on site. We are actually increasing the buffer from previous tenant at that site, previous owner, and we are making some, actually enhancement to the buffer itself. However, it's not going to be 50 feet as updated requirements require.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal?
I couldn't hear a word you said. We couldn't hear, is this the Ganley?
Yes.
Yes.
So speak into the mic a little bit more, and just give a brief. I'm sorry.
Yes, so previous owner of the property had the buffer slightly smaller as we are proposing. We are actually increasing the buffer, making the enhancement, adding additional landscaping on Ganley's side of the fence, and we're asking for conditional approval of this proposal. The buffer will vary throughout, however, it's not going to meet 50-foot requirement.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal?
Tell me if you're in the middle.
Is there anybody wishing to speak against? You can come up.
I'll, I just, yeah, I just, I-
You may just have a question.
I'm on the other side. Yeah, I'm sort of in the-
All right, come on up. Give us your name and address.
Elizabeth Volk, and we live on Prospect Street.
You got to get into the mic here. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Elizabeth Volk, and I live on 8456 Prospect Street, which is on the other side of the fence.
Could you spell the last name?
Volk, V as in Victor, O-L-K.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And, I mean, this isn't our first rodeo with the car sales on the other side. I think we're at the third one now, going on the other side, and my only concern is the fence, and that's really what it is. And actually, I brought with me, because for 25 years, we basically had the fence, and someone had said initially that it was a six-foot fence. It's an eight-foot fence on a four-foot mound, and that was the agreement originally with the city. And then they were talking about changing the fence or putting in some vinyl fence. Well, right now, we have, and I'm not the only one who basically has a lot of foliage on our side, so to put in some sort of white vinyl fence is just going to sort of ruin everything. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to, you know, and we all are, to discuss if they'd like to change it some, but to put in a white vinyl fence is just not really going to enhance our property. And the origin, that they originally agreed to the mound and then the eight-foot fence was so that, you know, we don't actually see all of the cars and things like that. I know that, let's see, I think that the lighting has always been an issue, and that was promised they would fix that, but that was 25 years ago, so it still hasn't been changed, especially if you've got somebody new coming in, because a lot of it goes directly into, for those of us who have two stories, a lot of it goes directly into our, you know, bedroom windows. So, you know, I have no problem with them going in, as long as we can just agree on the fence, the issue with the fence. And here's the original, I have a copy of the original agreement with, if anybody wants it.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? Give us your name and address, and-
Hi, my name is Roy Gogelin, G-O-G-O-L-I-N. I live on 7386 Hart Street. It's the northeast corner of the property that is in question. My, I mirror Mrs. Volk's opinion, and that's, first of all, it's an eight-foot fence, wooden fence, and we like the blending in of the wood to the natural surrounding, and we feel that a white vinyl would just kind of shout "white fence" no matter when you look out your back window. Not to mention, it would be shorter, six-foot would be shorter than the existing eight-foot. So I have no objection to leaving the fence, as long as they repair what needs to be repaired. That's what I would like. I don't know about Mrs. Volk and Jean. But that's my opinion, and that's what my wife and I are in favor of. Leaving the existing fence, fixing it up, and not changing the color or the location. The location, it does, it's fine. It's close to the property line, but we don't mind it. But another thing that I would like to bring up is what Mrs. Volk brought up, and that is, I don't know if the city has a lighting regulation or zoning code. All of the, I know security is very important to car dealerships. We have Enterprise Car Rental to the east of us, we have Carver Financial to the west of us, and all these new lights that they are putting in are just amazingly bright. Of course, these LEDs are amazing, and they just light up the whole neighborhood. You could sit, you could read the newspaper in your backyard and, with all these lights going on. So I'd like to consider the lighting issue and seeing if there is a regulation on light So that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? Come on up, give us your name and address.
Yeah.
And you're tall, too, so you're going to have to bend down for the mic a little bit.
I got it. My name is Joe Frato. That's F-R-A-T-O. I'm at 8462 Prospect Street. And like he was saying, the fence, definitely don't move the fence, the lights. And another concern is, when there was, the previous place was there, there was a lot of noise at night, like the mechanics working and stuff like that. There was a lot of people, I don't know if they were testing the brakes or something, they were like doing burnouts in the back parking lot or something. I have four kids, so I'm always concerned for them, stuff like that. I don't know, anything else?
The other thing is, each time-
Hold on.
Nope.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to leaving the fence, like he was saying, and definitely don't make the fence any shorter, and that should be it.
Thank you.
Got it.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, could you talk about the lighting a little bit?
Sure. We actually are addressing the lighting in the site plan review, but we are recommending that the light flows along the rear property line be eliminated or reduced in number to lower the lighting in the area. The lighting allowances for a dealership are a little bit higher than they are for other uses, and so I think we're fairly confident that the light that's going to emit from the other areas of the parking lot will still provide plenty of light along that last row, which is for employee parking. And presumably, they'll be there possibly at certain times late at night, but I still think that there's going to be adequate parking, adequate lighting with the other lighting in the parking lot. So that is a recommended condition under the final site plan, to at least eliminate or reduce the number, in number, the lighting on that last row. Would like to address the comment with regard to the fence. The existing conditions plan that was submitted as part of the packet, it indicates that it's a six-foot high fence. So if it is in fact eight feet, we certainly want to note that the, on condition number two under the conditional use permit, buffer reduction acknowledges a six-foot high fence. The requirement is for an eight-foot fence, and certainly, the administration doesn't object to maintaining the requirement, and if in fact it is eight feet out there, but that's just, but again, the plans do indicate. And we recommended vinyl, we didn't recommend a particular color, we recommended vinyl only from a maintenance standpoint. If wood is preferred from a natural appearance and aesthetic standpoint, fine, but it was really more about the condition of the existing fence. It is in need of repair, and so we just thought an overall replacement would be ideal. So if you're going to make any changes, I would just note those two items in item number two, the height of the fence and the type of material.
And can you speak to the noise a little bit at night? I mean, what could residents do that, if there was noise and whatnot?
We have a noise ordinance that the police department enforces. I mean, if they do find that they're in violation, there are hours of, hours where noise is restricted. If they're in violation, they should contact the police department. Again, this is a use that's been there for many years, as they've indicated, they're familiar with it. I don't, there is no outside repairs that are being done or anything of that nature, really closer towards the back and around the perimeter, it's vehicle storage. So the hope is that there isn't a lot of noise around the perimeter, any of the work that's going to be done is exclusively inside the building from a service standpoint.
With the increased buffer-
That helps, certainly.
It's going to help, and you would think that it wouldn't be as loud.
And we recommend that the exhibit that's shown, and we provided that in your packet, be included as part of the conditional use approval, because they do show that it is an increase from what was already there.
Okay, can the applicant come back up? I'm sorry, the public portion is closed. Could you speak to some of these questions that the residents had, primarily like an eight-foot fence?
That's right.
Complete replacement that isn't white?
That's right. Currently, along the west side of the property, we have a six-foot fence, and in the front setback, we have decorative rail fence. Along the back, which is the north side, and also along the east side, along the residential properties, we have eight-foot fence, and then it switches to, back to six, where we have commercial property, and then again, back to decorative fence in the front. The intent is to maintain existing fence as is. Ken Ganley does, he is investigating pricing for replacement based on the recommendation from Planning Commission, maybe down the line, but not part of this project. And this would require a different approval, not this approval.
Yeah, what's that mean?
I mean, we're not asking for approval to replace the fence, but approval to leave the fence and maintain as is, replace and as needed, only if it's in a bad condition. Sections, sections.
Is there anything from the commission members?
I have a couple questions.
Mr. Varga?
Is it possible to leave the fence in the location it's at based on your design?
Yes, that's what we are proposing.
That's what you're proposing. Was the city asking for mounting in addition to a new fence, or can they develop the landscaping as shown with the existing fence?
There is mounting that's existing, there is mounting that's required, so-
So what I'm trying to get at is, if we let them keep the fence that's there, can they make, can they develop the landscaping as it's shown?
I mean, certainly, I guess, there's an existing berm, I believe it's two feet high.
And the fence is on top of that?
Okay, well, we would have to do another field inspection, because I know we, one of the planners did do a field inspection, and we would probably want the plans updated because what the gentleman just indicated is not what's shown on the plan in terms of the height of the fence.
Yeah, so what he's saying is, it sounds like the commercial portion up front towards Mennor Avenue is six-foot. When it gets back to the residential area, it's eight-foot, eight-foot across the back-
That is correct.
And then six-foot on the west side. Okay. And it's a wood, it's a wood fence.
Right.
A board fence, it fits into a frame. Could we consider refurbishing the fence?
That is the intent, to-
I mean, I'm not sure what conditions, and I'm sorry, I should have gone out and looked.
There were sections that have been replaced already. There have been sections that have been painted, repainted, but Ken Ganley is, his intention is to maintain existing fence and fix it up as needed.
Okay. Based on what I've heard from the comments, they would almost prefer the existing fence to be refurbished or painted or stained or whatever the appropriate approach is. Does the city have a problem with that? I mean, you know, your opinion is-
I think we want the fence to be repaired, and there are sections of the fence, we didn't take pictures of every section of the fence.
No, but I mean-
But there are sections of the fence that are in need of repair, and we're not talking about down the line, we'd like it repaired.
Right away. It's part of this project.
Yes.
You don't seem to have a problem with that.
Not at all, no.
And that would, in my mind, that would include replacing all damaged or deficient sections and repainting or restaining, I'm not sure, what, the entire thing, so it all looks good and new. I mean, it all looks consistent.
Yes.
All right.
Is the fence consistent all along the north line? Is it the same type of fence? I mean, the reason I ask is, we've seen this now for about five planning meetings in a row, and you've spared no expense on it. So why at the end, why not just do a brand-new eight-foot fence, make everything look nice, board-on-board? I mean, you've done everything, basically, we've asked. Why at this point not just make it all new?
It just came up during the last review. Ken, like I mentioned, Ken Ganley is already looking at different types of fencing, investigating the cost. However, we're trying to submit for building permit next Friday. We may not be able to capture all this, all those upgrades in that submission.
The fence repairs can be, can still be submitted.
Yes.
Still be part of the project, even if it's not submitted next Friday.
That is correct, yes. We're talking about selection and full replacement.
Are you asking or telling?
No, I believed you were asking, why not replace the whole thing?
Why not just replace it all? What are we doing here?
Right, right. So that's why, it came up as a condition in the last review, that's why, that's why we don't, we don't have the timeframe to actually select the right fence and propose the full replacement. That's why we're thinking, maintain what's out there and keep it nice for the time being, but still looking at replacement down the line.
I mean, I guess I'm a little confused. By the time you get this building built, you mean to tell me you can't pick out a fence and have it by then? I mean, I'm not saying you got to build this thing in two weeks, Sam, by the time you have this grand opening with these balloons flying in the air, have the fence up.
And perhaps it may happen. Like I said, we're proposing maintaining existing and investigating options for full replacement.
Is there anything else from the commission members? No?
I'm just trying to work with everybody here. It, just from comments in the community, it sounds like they'd be willing to live with this fence if it was just refurbished, repaired, refurbished, and it sounds like it also meets the conditions or the requirements of the city. Eight-foot at residential, six-foot at commercial areas. I mean, we could say, just put it all new and just make it a condition, it doesn't mean you have to have this figured out next week, you know? So we go either way. I'm just trying to, you know, as always, I'm trying to make things work and-
I mean, it's got to be a 20 or 30-year-old fence now, right? I mean, it's an old fence now. You're going to have this brand-new shiny building in front of it.
Yeah. There were sections replaced throughout that time.
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
The, I was a little confused when you were going through. So the rear of the property has an eight-foot fence, but you're saying that the right side of the property only has a six-foot fence, even though that is adjacent to residential properties?
No, the whole rear is eight feet, and then when it turns the corner, we have an eight-foot fence along the residential, and then once we hit commercial, it switches to six.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
That reflects the requirements of the city, right?
So the requirement, which they're asking for a reduction, but the requirement is an eight-foot fence on a berm. The only thing I guess I would ask the commission is, is that the plan be updated to reflect the actual heights that are out there, because that's not what's, especially if this is going to be part of the conditional use approval. And if that's what's going to be the recommendation, then number two needs to be adjusted to say, to match the heights that exist today, and either repair and/or replace as however you see appropriate. And it doesn't have to be a vinyl fence, but I think the plan needs to be updated to appropriately reflect the actual fence heights, because we've got an existing conditions map that's not matching what is being said, and that's fine, just needs to be updated. So I just want to be on record that it needs to be updated.
That's why I'm on board with just take it all down and put all new up, board-on-board, wood fence, and now we've started with, we know we're, we know some of it's been replaced, some of it hasn't been replaced. You get out there, really get a good look at it, it's a 20, 30-year-old fence. I'm kind of like, why not just?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I was out there today, and that's exactly how he says, it's six, then eight, then in the back, it's an eight-foot fence on a four-foot mound, just as he's describing. Are we going to require a mound on the two sides as well, because that is not on the mound?
Well, it's however you want to condition it.
I would say proposing changing number two to existing high wood fence, replace with an eight-foot high fence. Now, we get the new fence, because it is in disrepair. I mean, it's chopped up now, there's boards holding up, you know, all over the place out there.
I'm on board with that.
Summer, and not white vinyl.
Like a board-on-board wood fence.
Keep the condition.
Yeah. Is there anything else from the commission members? Without-
No, can I make a suggestion?
Ms. Small?
We could also do something like wood or wood-like appearance, something like a Trex or something, you could do that would be easier to maintain.
Good, yeah.
So vinyl fence with wood appearance could be appropriate.
But not white.
Not white.
Not white, no, no. I think it has to fit into the natural-
Right.
-environment.
Would you rather have a vinyl fence, or would you rather have a wood fence? As long as the vinyl fence looks like wood.
Right. If we're going to be replacing the fence, it would be vinyl, just so it's a low-maintenance product, yes.
And I'm sure they make vinyl fences that look like wood.
That look like wood, yes.
Of course. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, let's, what are we going to do with this condition? How are we going to word it?
Well, I think we're going to reword it right now, right? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the three conditions. And number two being, the fence will be replaced with eight-foot-high wood-like eight-foot fence, either wood, Trex-like material, or vinyl. Yes?
Is that clear enough?
I don't know. I think when we mentioned just the word eight, because there is a variable height out there, is it the commission's, is it the motion that all- is it the commission's, is it the motion that all of the fencing, six-foot and eight-foot high, are to be replaced? Because that would have to be then a little bit more specific, because only the number eight was mentioned.
Right, okay. The existing height, to reflect the existing height and location. The existing location and the existing height. Eight foot where eight foot is, six foot where six foot is, because it meets the requirements of the zoning separation.
The part where it's six foot now, is that the requirement, or can it be eight foot? Because that's next to a commercial district and not.
Yeah, commercial to commercial.
Because I'm kind of on board with, if you can make it eight, just make it all the same.
Well, if it is next to commercial, it doesn't have to be eight.
It doesn't have to be. So six foot next to commercial, eight foot next to residential, wood-like PVC, Trex-type material.
Slash.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go ahead and do that condition one more time.
Maybe read it back, you know, beginning to end, because it will be confusing tomorrow.
Mr. Tiedemann, yeah, sure.
Can you read what you just wrote down? Because I didn't write down everything.
Sure. The existing six-foot and eight-foot-high fences shall be replaced with vinyl, Trex material, wood-like in appearance, and maintained for the life of the building. And I think there was an additional component, and shall not be white in color?
Correct.
Okay. And shall not be white in color. I have the clerk got that, so.
Can we change the Trex to composite material, which is?
Trex is a more manufactured.
Right.
So it'd be vinyl or composite material?
Okay. Yeah, I think Trex is a brand name.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. I don't know.
It is.
Okay, so are we clear as a mud on?
Also, I would like to ask, what about the mounds? Should we maintain what's out there, just for replacement as is?
Yeah, I don't know.
Leave the mounds.
Leave the mounds.
Mounds.
Leave the mounds.
Eight-foot, wood-like composite fence.
So if there is no mound, should we, there is no need to place one in that place, right?
Well, I'm picturing an eight-foot fence on a mound, and you don't want it going like this. So if there's a mound, you gotta maintain it so the fence looks right?
Right. I believe on west side and east side, there is no mound. Only on the north side, we have a mound.
Okay. So how do you transition from an eight-foot mounded fence to an eight-foot non-mound?
Right now, it's a curve.
It's a curve, right.
Right.
How about, okay, again, just trying to fill in the blanks here. The section that's along residential, you put a mound there, and you put the eight-foot fence on top. Now, you're consistent with all residential borders, and then when you go to commercial, it's six foot on the ground. And you just make a, you make a.
Transition.
You make a transition in two places to the commercial, right? Just be consistent with the relationship to residential and the relationship to commercial. So we're gonna have to rework our comment.
That is a lot more correct.
There is one more type of fence, which is decorative fence in the front setback. Should we maintain that fence?
That's different, that's separate.
That's gonna be on the site plan.
That's not part of the buffer.
Yeah, right, this is a buffer. So should we do this condition one more time?
I'll try. So it's, the existing six-foot and eight-foot-high fences shall be replaced with vinyl or composite material, wood-like in appearance, and not white in color. Where mounding currently exists, it shall be maintained to be supplemented by additional four-foot-high mounding along the eastern property line where eight-foot-high fence is required.
Yes, good.
Or where it's residential property?
Yeah, same, it's the same.
Same thing.
Correct.
Same thing.
I think Joe got it.
I think.
To you.
He nailed it, Joe.
All right. I'm just trying to put a period on it, that's all.
Do we have a second? Second. Jackie Lupe Scolerol.
Ms. Small, yes. Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
All right, we have a final site plan of a car dealership at 8505 Manor Avenue that applicants hear. Tell us a little bit about the site plan.
Yes. We are proposing sixty-six thousand square foot building. Previously dealership site, the building is being enlarged from previous building. Portion of the building is being maintained and upgraded. We have, we are maintaining and slightly modifying three entrances with aprons, one on east side along the Manor Avenue, the center at the intersection, as well as the west side of the property. Actually, on this private, this plan, we are showing a curb in the middle of the west apron. We wanna omit that curb island, which was not, which was not an issue in the preliminary review. However, on the east side, we will maintain it, as shown on drawings. We already have contacted the engineering team in the city, and there is no objections to this condition. Since our last meeting, we have added the decorative fencing along the, along the front. At each apron, we added landscaping around those as well, to dress up the appearance of the entrances. And, and along the front, we are proposing a display of a Jeep mountain, as well as, which is this, as well as the, another spot, which is a pad for another vehicle in the middle of the property. We're adding signage, but one of the conditions, I believe, mentioned that the signage is not part of this approval and will be submitted separately. Going through conditions, there are eight conditions. We have reviewed all of them, and one of the conditions, which is number three, refers to EV charging stations to be submitted with building permit submission. We are asking for the first submittal before installation, just because we won't be able to get the cut sheets of those charging stations in time before submission. However, we do wanna, we will submit before installation. Another, which is number four, any ground-mounted mechanical equipment shall be screened. We don't have mechanical equipment on site, however, we do have transformer along the east side of the property. We are proposing landscaping around the transformer to screen it. Another piece of equipment would be on the east side of the building, and there's gonna be a gas meter. I don't believe that utility company will allow us to screen that gas meter, because it's gotta be visible from the street. That's, that's what we experienced in other projects. We, and those are, those are the only equipment, that's the only equipment that we have on the property, with the exception of charging stations, which will be submitted as the first submittal. Then we are okay with number five, the landscaping. Then we're looking at item number six, it refers to the photometrics. We just talked about photometrics. One of the, one of the suggestions was to dim the lights along the rear of the property. We are already working on dimming those lights, even though we are in compliance with the code right now. And just to point out, the values that you see along the property did not take into account the fence or any landscaping along the buffer. So those values will be significantly less or even down to zero, if you take those into Then there is one more item in the front. We are also dimming the front values, so we comply with city requirements into four-hundred lumens, I believe. And there was another comment about the spotlights at the Jeep mountain. Would it be possible eliminating the spotlights and maybe do in-ground lights that shine up versus actual spotlight on a tripod? That's, perhaps that would be acceptable? And, let's see, another one would be item number eight. In item number eight, we are referring to the sprinkler system on the property for, for all the vegetation. And I would like to get a clarification on that. Is it just for landscaping in the front, or does it include all the buffer along the perimeter of the property? Or is it just the front landscaped areas? And that should include everything.
Thanks. Kathy, could you address any of these?
So under the outdoor lighting chapter of the zoning code, lighting cannot be pointed in an upward direction. So floodlighting is not permitted. So it's pretty cut and dry, that we just can't have lights going in an upward direction. I don't think anybody's gonna miss that mountain, though. I don't know that, how necessary the lighting's gonna be.
Even if they're in the ground and tilted? Or are you thinking?
We have to have, they have to be fully shielded. And it just, it just says, ground-level signs cannot have lighting pointed in an upward directions. It's pretty specific. So, again, there's gonna be a lot of lighting on the site, so I don't know that that's an issue, but the other, I guess the comment that Mr. Circo was making with regard to the rear parking, the rear line, our recommended condition under 6B says, light poles along the rear property line shall be eliminated or reduced in number. Kept referring to dimming them. So there's a difference. If you want to have them, if you're fine with having them dimmed, fine, but that's not how we've worded it here. We've said eliminated or reduce the number of lighting. And I guess if we're gonna reduce it, then we should be specific, but, I mean, dimming is different than eliminating, so. And I think your last question, and I was reading the code, so I don't know if I caught everything, but the irrigation system is for all landscaped areas, so, which we can address during the building permit review, but is that, is that what you were looking for?
Yes, just wanted to get a clarification if it's the whole site or just the front.
All landscaped areas.
All landscaped, including buffer, okay.
So let's talk about the lighting against the rear, too, because that was some residence issues. So when you say dim, does that mean, like, when you shut the lights off at night, they dim down in the back, or?
No, we wanna reduce the values, just like suggested. So reducing the number of light poles would create hotspots along the rear. We wanna have uniform light level, but we're gonna reduce the values down, so it's not as bright.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Varga? Can I ask a question? How tall are the light poles in the back?
I believe they are, they're indicated not on plan. I believe they're, those are twenty-eight and a half foot poles.
Could we have shorter light poles? And the purpose being, we have a four-foot berm and an eight-foot fence. Could you have twelve-foot light poles?
On the back line?
Yeah.
The back line?
That would pretty much be not visible from a horizontal view, from the neighbors. You might need more of them, but they'd be out of sight. I'm just throwing that out as an idea to address, you know, you don't, you won't see the light poles from the residential.
Right. That, that area is heavily wooded, and there's a lot of vegetation. I don't believe that poles would be visible, but it's a possibility.
And these are fully cut-off fixtures, right?
They are fully, the light is fully down, doesn't shine.
So from off-site, you cannot see the light source? You just see the light, but you don't see the light source?
If you look up and the pole is tall enough.
Well, that's part of what I'm getting at about if the poles along the residential edges are not as high, then you won't have a tendency to see the lights at all.
True.
Does the city have any response to that idea? I mean, is that, is that a reasonable?
Certainly lowering the pole height would make a difference. It's a twenty-seven and a half, approximately on the average pole height. There are some that are twenty-eight, but.
And how many are across the back line?
That's what we're trying to determine.
Wherever you have the blue text, when you go back to the photometrics, that's where the pole is. So we have five poles.
So, okay, my suggestion, at least for discussion right here, is to reduce those heights. I realize you'll have more lights, but reduce the height significantly, like around twelve, fourteen feet, something like that, so that you don't have, you can't see the light sources from off-site.
On the last, on the last row?
The last, on the last.
On the last row, right.
Just along the back.
Yeah, the ones that affect the, and also on the side.
East side.
The east side, just the back, the ones that affect the residential areas.
Which is, there's eight, but you might wind up with twelve now.
You might end up with more, but you don't, but they won't, they won't see the light source when they look over the fence. In fact, if, depending on the height, you may not see the fixture at all.
Yeah, we just wanna keep them high enough to, so the cars clear it.
Well, twelve feet is, last time I looked.
Unless they're on that mound.
Unless there's a car carrier going by.
Well, but this is at the perimeter, too, so there's no, but nobody driving, based on that location, nor at the back of the space, it's next to the landscape, so there's nobody gonna be.
There should be nobody driving.
Nobody's driving a tall truck there. So is that, any comments from the?
That sounds great.
Commissioners?
Is there any?
Any comment from the city? I mean, does, what do you think that's a reasonable approach?
That's fine, just we need to modify 6B.
Okay, so.
Six B. There we go.
Modify to?
To lower the, lower the height of the poles at the perimeter, at the residential perimeter.
Yes.
To twelve, fourteen feet.
You say twelve to fourteen.
Okay, twelve. Let's say twelve, and then, you know, if there's an issue, then you can negotiate with the city, but twelve feet, and we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight poles. Now, there may, I understand there may be more, but reduce the height of the, those perimeter poles at the, adjacent to the residential property to twelve feet high.
Yes. Not a problem.
All right. And the Jeep mountain, it's not higher than four feet?
Actual mountain is four feet, but once you drive the Jeep on it, it's tall.
Now, that will be the high point in the city of Manor.
It looks like it's on a platform. Is it typically, is the mountain typically on a platform? Because I think then you would add a height. Because I think then you would add height to it, but it's, we're saying from ground, it should not be higher. The mountain itself should not be higher than 4 feet.
Right. We're proposing a concrete pad flush with the top of the curb, and then mountain would be mounted on top of that concrete pad.
Now, it looks like there's, excuse me, Chairman, it looks like there's lighting incorporated into this mountain, based on the photo. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Is that, Kathy? Oh, she's disgusted.
And those are the spotlights we were referring to.
There's lighting incorporated into this hill, this mountain. Is those the ones that you have the problem with? Because they appear to shine up at the vehicle.
I believe those are considered the floodlights, are they not?
Yes, those are the lights we were talking about.
Okay, so those are the ones, so the city does not want to see those.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann?
While we're talking about this mountain, because this is the first we've seen this tonight, and you also mentioned a couple of display pads, or is there just one display pad for a vehicle?
This is one of them, which is the concrete pad, mountain will go on top, and then there is another one in the middle of the property, which is display pad flush with the top of curb.
How far away are these from the sidewalk?
I don't have exact measurement, but roughly from the sidewalk, let's see, the sidewalk.
I know it's between the 10-foot setback and the, and the front, and the front building setback minimum, so it's between 10 and 30 feet away from the front property line. So it's not, and there was one, I don't know what page, you have a lot of pages, so I don't know that it's easy to find, but there was one page that showed the dimensions.
I couldn't see it on mine, it's small. All right, I'm gonna be the broken record and say, "This is Old Village, and this just doesn't look good in the Old Village of Mentor."
Thank you.
So, that's my opinion on that. I just, I don't wanna drive down Mentor Avenue and see that sitting there. I just think that, again, we're talking about the Old Village District.
Right.
Which is supposed to give you that old-timey feel, and seeing a Jeep on a rock doesn't do that.
Can we go back to a pad and not the mountain? This becomes a corporate decision.
Right, right.
We could make that the condition, and you could argue about it. We could, we could make, say, "No, no mountain, just another pad, two pads, two vehicles." Mr. Tiedemann, what do you think about that?
A pad is better than a rock.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
I mean, I know we've, we've okayed pads for.
Before.
Other displays, so that makes a little more sense to me. It's not as obtrusive-looking. I do have one other question I just thought of. Are you selling Fiat's here as well?
There will be a sign, but no selling Fiat's, no.
So there'll be a Fiat sign?
That's right. That's the owner of all those companies here.
So a Fiat sign, but no Fiat's for sale?
That's right.
Is the sign gonna be out by the street, or is it just, like, inside the dealership somewhere?
We're gonna be proposing that sign on the face of the building, on Chrysler's side of the building.
And that's something brand new tonight, too.
That's new, yeah, that's, I was like, we didn't see that originally.
I believe, I believe it's on.
Mr. Tiedemann? Yeah, that, that will have some sign code implications, which, if they submit, the administration, you know, will have an opportunity to note any code objections for the Fiat sign, or any other non-conformities.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
The, could we go back to the site plan? I wanna, I missed where exactly these electric, charging stations were. They're right there, the first two, the last two spaces?
Well, no, that's, that's the transformer. They're actually further north of that.
North of that?
North of the transformer. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, can you blow that up? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, and the reason I ask is, that seems like a very conservative number of charging stations, considering the future of electric cars. Is this just the first step in something that would, would you be theoretically putting charging stations along that whole wall, with that whole line?
No, that's not the intent. We placed two charging stations right at that, right next to the transformer, because those charging stations are fast charging stations, they gotta be close to their power source. There are additional charging stations at the rear of the building, not visible from the street, which is on the east side rear. And there are three keynotes, as you can see, on the east, west, north corner, back of the building, the, the front portion of the building.
Over here.
Oh, back, over there.
Yeah, over there. All right.
And those, those are wall-mounted charging stations, which will be not visible from the street.
And all five of these are open to the public 24 hours?
They're not open to the public.
So they won't be on the grid of charging stations in the world? And they'd have to come back anyhow if they added charging stations in the future?
Well, they conform to all of the requirements there. There are some that don't have to come to planning commission if, unless it deviates from the site plan that was approved, so.
I'm just wondering, because in the future, you know, you're gonna have 24 charging stations that keep open to the public.
Yes, we'll, we'll address that at that.
I understand, yes. And, and I, in my own opinion, the, the transformer, it's, there's an eight-foot fence and a four-foot berm on the property side, and if the landscaping is around that, that's sufficient.
I'm sorry, the public portion is closed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Kathy, anything more from administration?
Nothing, other than the conditions noted.
Mr. Chairman, did we come up with changing condition number two regarding the mountain? We're gonna change that to, so be placed on a pad, or?
I'd like to see it's placed on a pad, as the way to address it. The general, I mean, anyone else on the commission have a different opinion?
I could go either way. I mean, I, if, I don't have a strong opposition either way.
I prefer the pad.
Flat pad?
Flat pad.
Flat Jeep pad?
Two flat pads, no mountain. Number two.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
How many conditions should we have here?
Well, we've got number two to change, and 6B to change.
Okay, so with those changed, proposing approval with eight exceptions, or, yeah.
There's, there's also number three, we would like to have the first submitted for EV stations, because it says that those have to be submitted with building.
Kathy, they can submit those ahead of time.
Yeah, it's still, it's still a building permit review, whether it's the first building permit, or one a little bit later, that's fine, as long as it's done.
So not an issue.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, we're proposing approval with eight conditions, second condition is altered, 6B is altered, as discussed.
No, no, we're gonna have to say.
I thought, I thought we went through that. Okay, well then, let's.
So no Jeep mountain pad?
Yeah. Right, the, the proposed mountain will be replaced with a vehicle pad flush with the grade. And 6B is, okay, the 6B, the light poles along the rear of the property line shall be reduced in height to 12 feet. Rear property line adjacent to residential properties reduced to 12 feet.
All light poles adjacent to residential properties.
Not just the rear.
Not just the rear, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Would be reduced to 12 feet.
Are we good on that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. One second.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
No.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
You have an architectural review of a car dealership, 8505 Mentor Avenue. See that applicant's here? Let's talk about your architecture work.
All right. We are, again, proposing a 66,000 square foot building. There is a second story to the building as well. We had a few meetings before this meeting regarding the building materials. Since then, we have modified building material to brick on majority of the building, facing the street, and also both sides, wrapping around the back. Also, since last time, we received an informal comment from, from you that you would like to increase the windows on a service side of the building. We have increased those, made them uniform, so it doesn't look utilitarian. This is, this is the west, if you scroll down, there's another rendering of the east side of the property, a little more, I think. Yeah, this one, it shows the three windows to the left of the garage doors, to make that building look a little more presentable, and it doesn't look like a garage. Also, we have added additional landscaping on the corner of the east, south of the building. You see this a little bit in this rendering, well, if you scroll down to the right of those overhead doors. And, and, and that's where we ended up since last feedback. Thank you for the previous feedback.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
No, other than the two conditions noted.
Anything from the commission members?
Question?
Mr. Varga?
You've changed, I don't remember, and I don't wanna be hogwigs here by myself. You haven't changed anything else that you haven't spoken about? You haven't changed anything on the elevations, based on what we reviewed and reacted to the last time?
The actual elevations, we've increased slightly the height to, to be able to screen the units on the roof. So whenever, all those renderings represent computer model. The units are in the model, and they're not visible on the roof. From the street, and from both sides, walking along the street, we also took another vantage point, which is, I believe this is this, vantage point from Drug Mart front door. You don't see any of the units, even from Drug Mart front door. And then, we did not include any of the renderings from the rear of the property, since everything is screened with heavy woods, and, and just a lot of vegetation in the way. But I do have a couple renderings, in case you'd like to take a look. Some of the units will be visible from property line, however, we'll have a lot of woods, and we'll have eight-foot fence, and this rendering was done if, like if nothing was on the property. And just wanna make sure it's, it's okay.
We've got the four-foot berm and the eight-foot fence. I think we're okay on that. And whatever landscaping.
About that?
All right, thanks.
Is there anything else from the commission members? Mr. Tiedemann?
On the Chrysler side, the west side of the building, there's a couple garage doors there. Is that just a vehicle prep area, or what is?
The, on the right-hand side of the?
On the west, west side?
West side, yeah. This is a, this is basically a showroom. This is new vehicle delivery, so if someone, let's see, buys a car, that's where the car would be parked. Someone would just walk into the garage, hop onto the car, and drive out. That's not meant for any repairs. This is strictly like a showroom. There will be floor tile, just like in the showroom in the front.
And now, I don't think we've ever seen renderings of the rear of the building?
Have it right here.
Have we? Have we? I don't know. Okay. It's basically the same all the way around? We're not, it's nothing?
The rear of the building is mostly ephes. It's not brick, but ephes, which is stucco material. And that's one of the approved materials. We do have elevations, and the color of the ephes will basically be matching the brick color from the distance. It will be hard to take, tell the difference. There is a dumpster enclosure also in the back. That will be done out of brick, just because you have a vantage point from the front, and you will be able to see it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything else from the commission members?
No, I was hoping to pull it up, but it worked, it's, I think, because of the size of the, of the.
The file?
The file, it's just huge, so.
Yeah, so those are extreme materials, right here. So we have brick on majority of the front, as well as the cast stone at the bottom water table. And then, on Jeep building, we have ACM panel.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Can I just, one more question? These images here, right in the middle, there's the Jeep sign and the, the tan area, and then immediately to the left of that, this shows a glass opening with a, with a frame around it. That's not a detail in this building, is it?
Which one? I'm sorry, again?
Okay, in the middle, here, right there. That detail doesn't exist in the building, does it?
This, this does exist. This is the Jeep building portion. If you look at the rendering, straight on, and.
I don't.
It's the window on the Jeep building. We have.
So it is actually covered, it is actually framed, but that wood material, you just don't see it in this elevation that clearly?
If you zoom in, it seems like it's out of focus for some reason.
Yeah, okay, that's why, I just hadn't, I didn't mean to interrupt the process, but I hadn't seen that detail in sit, now that, I don't know, zooming in, zooming in may not be able to see it.
It's, it's the same panel as we have on the Jeep entrance, above Jeep entrance.
Okay, no, it's fine. I just hadn't remembered seeing that detail, but now I see where it's located.
From, from a distance, you'll see, even from close by, the, the frame, and it has a wood grain on it, so.
It matches the, the material behind the Jeep logo.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
No.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Minor subdivision of the Bolton Estate at Johnny Cake Ridge Road.
Here we go.
Is that applicant here? I see. Give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Chris, sponsor, I'm legal counsel to Charlie Bolton, Bill Bolton, and Bolton Properties Limited. I don't live here in Mentor, but I live 464 South Ham Circle. That's in Berea, Ohio. All right. So we've submitted a, an application for a minor, the minor subdivision, the lot split and consolidation for what is known as the conservation area, or sub-area D from the agreed judgment entry for the Bolton Development Project. And this, these are the boundaries for the portions of the property that are going to be conveyed to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, in accordance with that agreed judgment entry. And the application we submit before you today is to establish those boundaries in advance of getting final approval from the county to complete our transaction with Western Reserve Land Conservancy.
Is that all you got right now? Is that all you've got right now?
That's it, yes.
Thanks. Kathy, anything from administration?
Refer to the law director.
Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The... This land is now subject to an agreed judgment entry whereby the property owners in City of Mentor settled a lawsuit. That is of record. Ink is fairly dry on it. I know it's been made available to the members of the planning commission. It's probably something you'll have to be intimately familiar with over the course of your tenure here on the commission. At issue with the administration, did a nice job reviewing this and feels that the area that they are showing to include within the conservation easement is an appropriate area. They didn't skew it too much. So the issue tonight is frankly more narrow, and it's a very legal issue, which is the total area that they're proposing within sub-area D, that being the conservation. They're at 51.44 and a little change for this proposed sub-area D. The agreed judgment entry required it to be 56 acres plus or minus, so an approximate 56 acres, located within the City of Mentor. I'll spend just a really brief amount of time just walking the members of the planning commission through some of the different sub-areas and those requirements. Pursuant to the agreed judgment entry, an additional 34 acres located in the village of Kirtland Hills was likewise to be conserved as part of the conservation area. So 90 acres between Mentor and Kirtland Hills, again, plus or minus. We understand things can be off by a tenth of an acre or so here and there, leaving the balance to be available for development. And there are additional sub-areas that are all located in Mentor, of course, for that development. Now, the largest of the sub-areas is Area A. That is for single-family detached, and that's 63 acres plus or minus. Sub-area B is the mixed-use area. It's 38 acres, again, plus or minus. Sub-area C, which is towards the south, close, nearly bordering Interstate 90, that's be 21 acres. And then, the area and, you know, surrounding property around the existing manor house, that's Sub-area E, and 8.5 acres. So the language in the existing judgment entry indicated that those were, for those sub-areas, not to exceed numbers. And again, we absolutely understand, and we did say they're approximate, meaning plus or minus a little bit. The total area in Mentor, and again, this is from the agreed judgment entry, this is 185.5 acres. And that was also specified, you know, within the agreed judgment entry by parcel numbers, as well as some of the property in Kirtland Hills. So pursuant to same, this agreed judgment entry is, just like any other approved development plan, any substantive changes would have to be made of the city council, and they would review it. First and foremost, of course, the planning commission would make recommendation as to any amendments to the approved development plan, which this is pursuant to the terms of the agreement and approved development plan. And then ultimately, that recommendation will go to the city council for its ultimate determination as to proposed amendments. So, again, the issue is the variance between the 56 acres called out in the agreed judgment entry and the proposal for, I'll round up, to 51.5. The acreage here is a zero-sum proposition. In other words, if that four-and-a-half, four acres, called four acres, is not included in the conservation area, by necessity and by implication, that means that that four acres becomes buildable. It has to go someplace. And so what is being sought tonight is effectively a change to the terms of the agreed judgment entry in the opinion of the city. That type of change has to be handled via amendment. And we are talking about numbers where the proposed area of the conservation easement at 51.4 acres is 8% less than contemplated by the AGE. Four acres, I'll just use that number, would then be repurposed for potential development. And just to give... Four acres doesn't maybe sound like a lot, but let's put it into perspective. The area of E for the manor house, that's 8.5 acres. Four acres is 47% of that area. Area C for the commercial component, that's 21 acres. Four acres is 19% of that area. Area B, mixed-use, 38 acres. Four acres is 10 and 1/2% of that area. So when we start looking at the analysis and the implications of removing this area from the conservation area as contemplated by the AGE, you start seeing exactly the effects that that has in the buildable area. And that is why we submit an objection to this proposal, because it simply goes too far afield from what was contemplated by the agreed entry. Again, there's an appropriate agreed mechanism to handle these types of changes, an appropriate decision-making process, but what is before you tonight is not approvable in the judgment of the city and my department, because, again, it is not in conformity with the agreed judgment entry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. Is there anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
So I would just ask the presenter, why the difference?
Can I... Let's speak?
Yeah.
Sure. So the agreed judgment entry, the 56 acres was incorrect. We took Exhibit 11 from that agreed judgment entry, and I do apologize, it was not part of our submission. What we sent before you, in no way are we trying to change any of the terms of that agreed judgment entry. We're not trying to increase. We're not requesting amendments to increase any of those sub-areas. We do recognize, as the law director mentioned, that there are approximations in many of these different areas. The sub-area D, which is this conservation area, this is the exhibit that was attached to that agreed judgment entry, and it shows a total boundary of approximately 90 acres, or plus or minus 90 acres, I should say. Oh, thank you. And, oh, actually, that was an earlier one. We had since added to it for the agreed judgment entry. But it showed plus or minus 90 acres and then plus or minus 56 in the City of Mentor. And we took this exact map, and Rick Thompson, who's here, who's a surveyor with Polaris Engineering, he took this map, he went out and he plotted these exact points on where the actual land is located. And it's just not 56 acres. There were three changes that were made to these boundaries. Two of them are in the village of Kirtland Hills. One is over to the east. There's a requirement in Kirtland Hills that property has five contiguous acres to build residential homes. So there's 15 acres that we've chunked out, a little bit of extra land in Kirtland, about three acres for development purposes over there. There's a little small piece to the south, which is in Kirtland Hills, that's no longer included in the conservation area that we're intending to convey to the Land Conservancy. But we've actually increased the area of the conservation area in Mentor. And when Rick went out and performed that work, I don't know, is it possible to share a diagram at this time? I only have one copy of it, but...
Yeah.
So when Rick went out and he surveyed the boundaries, the Western Reserve Land Conservancy...
If you give it to them, they'll...
Sure.
...regular machine here.
Thank you. The Western Reserve Land Conservancy identified the boundaries of this property. And so, again, we were focusing on a GIS map and not as surveyed land. And what you'll see here is the area that's shown in red with the dashed yellow line is what, as surveyed, based on this diagram that we had attached to our judgment entry. And there's a small portion that's closer to Sub-area A. If you can zoom in on the top left-hand part of that image...
Kathy, can you spin the document? There you go. Thank you.
Okay. So now, it's sort of the top right-hand corner. You can see where there's a yellow line and then a darker line where we actually... Julia Bolton noticed that there were many trees and other wildlife that was, we wanted to have preserved. So we actually expanded the boundary in that direction. And it does not come out to be 56 acres. It's just short of it. So one of the things Rick also noticed when he surveyed the land is that the boundary line between Mentor and Kirtland Hills is actually a little bit farther west as surveyed than as was shown on this diagram. So the slice of this division here, you can see how this dashed line shows the difference between the two municipalities. This line, as surveyed, was actually farther over into Mentor. So there was more land in Kirtland Hills of this 90-acre proposed conservation area. So it does not account for four acres. We're not proposing to increase the development size of Sub-area A, Sub-area B, C, or E at this time. We understand that all of the terms of the agreed judgment entry would still be incumbent on any developer of the remainder of the property. And these boundaries are just to promote, or to cause, the conveyance of the land to the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, which is the representation that was put forth in the agreed judgment entry.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Would it not be wise to go through the channels to make this adjustment in the agreement with the city first and then come back to us? The only reason I say that is because this is the first step in what will be a very large and complex project. And it's already stepping into an area where there is confusion about the size or location of borders, areas, you know, whatever. You know, it sounds like there is a variation in what the agreement was with the city versus what, you know... I understand the problem, what you're saying, but it should be straightened out before you come back to us. At least that would be my opinion.
Well, the boundaries of the property are what they are. We can't make more acreage appear in that portion of the diagram than is there. So, and we're not, again, we're not looking to change any of those boundaries. We followed exactly the dimensions as shown on the diagram, but for increasing to include some additional, some trees.
But this was yours. I was here.
Yeah.
I was here during this planning. I remember this whole process. This is your map.
That's correct.
You drew these lines.
Yes.
And it was 185.5. That never changed.
The total acreage.
So just make this 56. Have your surveyor resurvey it and make it 56 acres.
Those boundaries...
Oh, I get what you're trying to say. I get it. I understand, but 185.5 was always consistent with the parcels. Am I right, Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, sir.
The balance of each of the sub-areas and not one of the, as surveyed and approximated based on the remainder of it, not one of those sub-areas would increase by more than an acre right now in all of the...
Well, we don't know that. We don't know where that's going now. But we do know it started at 185.5. It was negotiated at 56 plus or minus, a couple tenths based on some survey lines, and now it's at 51.44. And it's the first thing we're seeing here, the first thing of this comprehensive project. So you widen it a little bit all the way over, and you come up with 56, plus or minus.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
I mean, just, our attorney suggested that it was four acres. It's actually closer to five acres. If you want to round off, round off to the closest whole number. And five acres, a 50-foot dimension of five acres is a mile long. Okay? I just want to know where that is. This is the first step. You alluded to the fact, Mr. Zeeman, you alluded to a process for amending the agreement?
Yes, again, all of these things were contemplated, and we know this is probably 20-year buildout, and so the world will change. And so, absolutely, the agreed judgment entry allows for the code processes to seek amendments. So, no question about that. But it's a little... The argument seems to be that, now, keep in mind, the city didn't do the survey. They did the survey. Now, again, the administration has taken a look at what they did, and they do feel like they've captured, you know, the area that should be captured within the area of the conservation easements. But these diagrams were clearly indicated in the AGE that they're schematic in nature, subject to further survey. That's why we had areas specifically defined, you know, by acreage for specific uses, including the conservation area. So this idea that somehow there was a mistake relative to the area of conservation and therefore, you know, we should be able to therefore reduce that area and build in others, there's no frame of reference to that in the AGE. There's no frame of reference that says, okay, you go only to the edge of the tree line and no further, and that shall delineate the conservation area. That language does not appear in the document. As to this idea of mistake, I do want to address that because, and again, there's no animosities or anything of that nature. This is business, and these are legal issues that are very important, and probably one of many that will come over the years. So I just want to get that out. We've got great communications with them, and as an attorney, you know, that's often what I hope for in these types of disputes. But we've had this issue come up before. And so the agreed judgment entry does indicate who bears the risk of any errors. So I will read that. It's a little lengthy, I apologize, but I think it's important that it be heard. "It is further ordered to judge and decree that plaintiffs, being the owners, have conducted, with the assistance of all experts. They deemed necessary and concluded to their satisfaction all surveys, soil tests, site inspections, environmental examinations, testing for hazardous substances, and access utility investigation, market studies, and any other investigation or study of any nature whatsoever they deem necessary to enter into this agreed entry, and have concluded to their respective satisfactions that the development of the property as contemplated herein is economically feasible, market-supported, that they have relied on no representations of the city whatsoever with respect to their approval of this agreed judgment entry and the developments they contemplate, that they bear all risk related to same such that if for whatever reasons, facts or circumstances they have relied upon later prove to have been in error, or assumptions, predictions, forecasts, or other such matters related to future conditions or circumstances do not for any reasons come to fruition, they shall not be able and have shall waive any right to seek the vacation or modification of this agreed judgment entry, and they, and all owners accordingly, bear all risk related to the revised Bolton Development Plan." So we did not accept any burden whatsoever related to these issues. If a municipal boundary is not precisely where they assumed it would, they bore that risk. So, again...
And again, this was yours. This was in those giant binders that I kept getting throughout the process. So I think the only way I get the yes tonight, and I don't want to speak for everybody, is if we put a condition in here that the conservation area be 56 acres. And have it surveyed accordingly to 56 acres in the City of Mentor. Joe, is that a condition that we can put?
Again, I think that that would, again, the administration should be afforded an opportunity to take a look at where the survey lines might be adjusted, just to make sure that it does seem appropriate areas for conservation.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Could we consider tabling this until this issue is resolved, before it comes back to us? Is that reasonable? Because I don't know how we resolve this right now.
Is that a motion?
I will make a motion that we table this right now to resolve the discrepancies in the numbers between the agreement and the documents in front of us.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a building addition, site alteration at 6883 Reynolds Road. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do with a building addition and the site.
Rich Cantan, Spree Design Consultants, Engineers and Surveyors, I'm at 9025 Osborne Drive in Mentor. So we'll do the site portion first. And I apologize for the late submittal. I think you guys were all forwarded our two options, revised options. Oh, first of all, I wanted to... Pastor Steve could not be with us tonight. I have a letter from him. If I can read that, please?
Sure.
Sure. I'll read quick. Dear Planning Commission and City Administration, on behalf of the congregation at Grace Church of Mentor, I want to express our deep appreciation for your enduring work to keep and make our city wonderful community. Our church makes a regular habit of praying for you and all in our city government. I deeply regret that I cannot attend in person tonight. Unfortunately, I tested positive for... I cannot attend in person tonight. Unfortunately, I tested positive for COVID yesterday and again today. I want to especially express my appreciation for Kathy, John, and Larry, who have helped us bring a more satisfactory submission to the commission. I believe that where our interests as, as a church and the interest of the city intersect, we will find the best possible solution. Kathy and her team have worked very hard to help us onto that end. Thank you. Rich and Jack, I have several options for you to consider tonight in light of the collaboration between the church and the city. I would ask that both options be approved and available to us as these options are our good faith effort to adjust the city's requests. Finally, I know in the past our parking requests have raised some eyebrows. Our current parking lot exceeds the city's maximum requirement, and our proposed parking will also do the same. I can assure you that our parking is not extreme to our historical usage. In fact, we currently have about 270 spaces and at times have run out. Our proposed options are not much more and are on the lower side of what we may need as folks continue to feel more comfortable gathering after the past two years, and as, by God's grace, we continue to serve our community. I'm very interested in helping any way I can during the meeting. If it is required and permissible, Jack or Rich can call me at any point to help answer any questions. Thank you for your time. Pastor Steve Sindalar. So because, because we submitted two new layouts to you recently, I just want to let you know a couple of things. Um, very recently, the, the property, I believe it's about 1.7 acres, the, the property directly to the north has been purchased by Grace Church of Mentor. Uh, it's on the very top of our site plan. And the, the property line furthest, you know, you could, near the east side is, is, is the beginning of the residential property over there. But Grace Church owns that property directly to the north of, of the site plan that was submitted. In addition to that, they already own a north-south rectangular piece of property that goes out to Bellflower. So I just wanted to, that one right there, correct. So I just wanted to make that known. Um, so right now we have two options. Um, and the reason why I brought both of them to your attention is we, we have worked all week with the City of Mentor, um, and their, and their comments. Um, I guess first I'll mention the, the similarities between and the, and the revisions that we made to both options. So option one is, is what was submitted previously, for the most part. Um, and option two is what we came up with, uh, within the last couple of days. Um, the similarities in both options, um, we adjusted the main drive aisle about five feet north to make a more smooth reverse curve transition into the front of the church. Both options show that. Um, both options also, by the city's comments, we put all of the handicap, most of the handicap spaces along the frontage of the, of the, uh, new addition and away from the entrance and exit area. Uh, we have 10 handicap spaces. For the 305 spaces we show on our plan, uh, only eight are required. We show 10. So in the area of the, of the main driveway, we do have 11 regular hand, regular, uh, parking spaces. But we wanted to get as many handicap spaces closer to the building as the city suggested. So that, that changes in both, both options. Uh, also in both options, the eastern parking lot, we changed the direction of parking to, uh, the previous, the previous, uh, plan showed them in the east-west direction. We changed them into the north-south direction, which matches every other parking space on the development. Uh, in addition to that, we, well, we, we actually had a reduction of parking spaces because of this. But it allowed us flexibility in, in parking aisles or, uh, drive aisles to allow fire trucks and, and other large vehicles to, uh, to, uh, maneuver throughout that site, throughout that portion of the site. In addition to that, by the city's request, we added small curb, curb dylans for, uh, whatever greenery, uh, we could fit within them. So that was also a condition or, or a consideration that we went through with, uh, after talking with the city. So the, the differences now between the two, um, is really, the main difference is the detention pond area. Um, currently, the, the existing detention pond for the, uh, current site is right directly west of the existing building. And it only made sense to have the proposed detention pond to be on the low, on the downstream side of the, uh, site also. So we've eliminated the parking spaces from the original submittal and located our proposed dry detention basin there. Uh, in option two. In option one, um, in option one, obviously, the detention pond stayed where it was, but we eliminated three spaces on each side. We kind of met the city halfway on that. Actually, we met the city more halfway than our, our way. But, uh, so in option one, we have 20 spaces over there. And we increased the turnout at the west side, you know, a little further to have a, a car maneuver through, in that if, if they found that there was no parking spaces once they went down there. Um, the, and we also clipped off the corner of the northeast, the corner of the dry detention basin to, uh, maintain the, the buffer with the residential property that's over there. Of course, in option two, uh, the pond's not there anymore, so the residential property is free and clear of any, uh, development that we're bringing before you tonight. And then the, um, the land banked area is still that northernmost bank of, uh, you know, double parking, each side with a 24-foot aisle down the, down the middle. Um, you know, option one shows, you know, 37 spaces just west of the pond. And option two, basically, the, the 20 spaces we, we lost in the detention basin, we put, um, in that northern area. And, and again, keeping in mind, in the future, you know, we may have a development out to the north to encompass the property to the north. Um, we've addressed all the other city comments the best we could. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Rich. Kathy, anything from the administration on what option the city prefers?
Well, again, hopefully everyone understands, um, uh, the, the expla, so, so Mr. Varga doesn't. So let's, let's...
All right. I'll answer any questions you have.
What is the benefit of one over the other? What would you prefer to build?
So I, I think our preference is option two, because it, it puts the detention pond in an area that, in a downstream area, uh, away from the remainder of the property. It allows more flexibility for the property to, you know, for more, uh, green area for the kids, um, flexibility for their, you know, for the property that they obtain to the north. Um...
Okay.
Yeah. So, so...
Let me ask the second. So Kathy, which option would the city prefer?
Okay. Well, so to, so to address the, at least the detention basin issue, I think just from a drainage standpoint, it seems to make more sense that it's at the front of the property, which is the west side. I think visually it will look nice. Um, you know, I think the most significant thing to note here is the northern drive is, is, is being removed from this proposal. And they're, they're creating a 36-foot wide access point at the existing southern, uh, access drive. So it, it is a significant change to the site. And with all of the parking that is anticipated, and by the way, um, the code, uh, we, we made a comment in the staff report that they should justify the basis for the increased parking. This was the same as on the Atkins Road property. There was additional parking proposed. Um, there, they did provide us with, um, a professional reference, which is what is expected in the code to justify why, um, they have an increase in parking. Our, our parking ratio really accounts for, you know, a family of four attending church. What they're saying is, is that's not necessarily the standard anymore, and it's maybe more like two people, you know, per car, instead of four people per car. So, uh, that's why they felt the need for the parking. You know, as long as they can provide for it on site, the administration doesn't have a problem with it. I think they provided us with some nice, a nice publication to reference their justification, um, for it. I also think, again, visually, the detention basin there with the removal of, of that drive is, is more appealing than the previous design with the parking that it kind of dead-ended on the original plan. So we didn't, we weren't really crazy about that. We, and, and just from a traffic circulation standpoint, we felt that, that had some concern. So this eliminates that. It creates better flow on, on the parcel.
First one, the one with the basin up front.
With the basin up front. Um, we definitely are in favor, and if you could point to the east side of the lot, of the parking, uh, lot configuration changes here. But, you know, this definitely flows better. I talked to the fire chief, and I asked him about the original design. If you were to take and follow the access drive past the addition and heading east, you were going to hit a row of parking. And while they said they could make the radiuses turn, making this a through, um, access road here to, all the way to the back of the site, and, and it is a much, is a much better traffic flow. And you would also note that, that first row of parking, um, that first parking aisle is in actually a wider parking aisle to allow for an emergency vehicle to make a turn. There's also a wider parking aisle at the very south end of the parking lot for the same reason, so that an emergency vehicle can, can make an appropriate turn. And so that works.
That is common to both schemes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that's, so that's a, yes. So that's on both schemes. The, the number of land bank spaces is more with the detention basin up towards the front of the site. But again, if they have the room for it, and with them purchasing the parcel to the north, it doesn't seem to be, um, an issue for the administration. I think they have a long-term goal of eventually, uh, creating a connector to Bellflower. So, um, but we would recommend where the land bank spaces are proposed, they provide additional landscaping. So option two is the way we would prefer.
Rich, I got a question.
Yeah.
During the public hearing portion of the buffer reduction, we had some residents come in and express their concern about runoff. And it was discussed to maybe have that last portion of the east parking lot pitched towards, uh, Grace Church so that they could collect it. Did you address that in your, in your elevations and all that?
So we did look at that, uh, in anticipation for our next step, which is the engineering design. But, um, we found that the catch basins there currently, you know, the, they're at low spots of the, of the existing pavement. But anything else in that 43 to 37-foot wide area, if it's not going to be pitched toward the parking lot, it's going to be probably from the fence and the mound, uh, into that, we're going to create a swale
Okay.
at the back end of the property, pick that up with yard drains and under drains.
Okay. So you're, you are addressing that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Both sides, both sides of the, of the mound, yes.
Yeah. But there, there was a, a lot of concern here. There was residents that live right there, and they had some, yeah.
Well, I mean, I was looking at some of the grades. Actually, some of their property runs toward us. So, you know, we're picking it up.
Right. Okay, good.
Hopefully keep it dry. But we have the, you know, we have the area, we have the elevation to do so. I just wanted to add one thing, you know, and Jack could correct me if I'm wrong, but we're really looking for an approval for both options because of the detention pond. Um, you know, it's a lot, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a smaller area, but we're, we're dealing with, uh, required volume on a ba, and we're dealing with area, volume, and elevation. And, um, it's very flat, so we may need as much room as we can to design this detention basin. I'm hoping, you know, that we could fit it up front. But we want the opportunity to maybe have it where it is in option one if we, if we don't have enough room in option two. So that's why, you know, we're, we tried to make every, both options as consistent as possible. And really, the only difference is the location of, of the detention pond. So...
So you could still do option two, but have the detention pond over here? Because I like that the, I like that the parking's not right up against 306. I like what, I like that the detention pond causes a buffer. So I'm okay with option two with detention pond over there also. But I don't, I'm not really okay with option one as it stands. Do you follow what I'm saying?
And mainly because of, mainly, main reason being?
On option one, the parking's right up against 306. I, I like that this detention basin, basin in option two pushes the parking back and helps with the flow of the traffic.
And then, you know, and I think I mentioned it, in both options, we have 305 spaces, land banked or other.
Oh, one of the comments that we, we thought of after, we, we discussed this, um, with Land Design today, I mean, with option two, if they determined during the, you know, engineering process that they need more detention, couldn't they take some, put some detention where it was, but still leave it up front? Asking, I, you know...
I mean, I...
With a big enough machine, you can do anything.
I would, yeah, I mean, I would prefer not to have three detention areas, honestly. So, um, we're going to do everything we can to, uh, fit it there. Of course, there's other options without even, you know, a third detention pond. But it depends how much volume I need, you know, underground pipe.
Mr. Chairman?
So...
Mr. Varga.
We, we can't approve two options with other possibilities. We have to approve one scheme or come back to us with your final proposal. We're not in the, and Mr. Zeeman, back me up if I'm saying something not correct, but if we propose something that has two or three options, we don't have anything approved, and we don't know what you're going to build. So I think either we approve something that's in front of us right now with no options, just approve one or two, or A or B, whatever, or come back to us with a, with your proposed design.
Please give us your name and address, please.
Name is Jack Berry.
You got to get into the mic here.
I'm sorry. Jack Berry from Architect One, uh, 2901 Pebble Beach Court, Finley, Ohio. I'm the architect of the project. I just wanted to add some...
You got to get into the mic, yeah. I'm sorry. I know. And you're tall too. Everybody's tall tonight.
I, I think everybody likes the, um, detention pond in the front aesthetically. Uh, but because the engineering hasn't been done, we don't know if that's big enough, as, as Rich said. Plus, there's not as much room there as there was with the parking to do the landscaping we wanted to do for that, to make a nice, appealing entrance. So, um, I guess what we'd like to know is if, I, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Varga that you need to approve one. I guess the question is during this discussion, um, is, uh, I want to approve just two possibly, is option one approvable, I guess, to come back? Uh, if, if we found out that with cost and engineering, that we really can't do option two the way we want, is number one approvable? Is that a fair question? I don't know.
Ms. Mitchell?
So there.
It really just comes down to the biggest difference on option, the first option, if you could blow up that, that parking area, yeah. If you're comfortable with parking area... If you're comfortable with parking area as proposed, they have made some changes from the original design that you saw in your packet, and maybe Rich could confirm that, but I believe they took away six parking spaces and created a bigger bump out so that if somebody were backing out from that, they could better turn their car and back out. It was just awkward, and we weren't crazy about that design, but they have improved it.
Okay, I'm going to be the bad guy. I suggest we table this until we have an approvable plan placed in front of us without options.
I have a question for the applicant. Would you be willing to be okay with just approving Option 2, knowing that your other alternative is to table this? What would you prefer?
Can I text the church real quick? Give me five seconds.
Sure.
If we approve Option 2, and you're doing your calculations, and the basin doesn't work...
You come back.
Then you can come back to move your detention basin. That is essentially approving...
Option 2.
Option 2.
Option 2, and if it doesn't work, you come back.
Let's go for Option 2.
Okay, we're in agreement with that.
Is there anything from the commission members? So this was just a building addition and site alteration, is there any, I guess we can touch base a little bit on the building. So what, what is...
This is site.
What are you going to do with the front of the building now that you're moving to the back here? What's happening with the front portion?
Meaning what?
306 side, because now you're putting 740 or 14, right?
Oh, you mean on the inside of the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Shouldn't we vote on the site plan?
Yeah.
That's number six. And then we'll do the architecture.
Mr. Chairman?
But it's building addition slash site alteration, so I thought we would hit them both, and then...
Two separate items, seven, it's six and seven.
It's one vote. Well, we can do the site, so I guess we have a motion for the site alteration only.
Mr. Chairman, one suggestion on item 2, because of the new information and that they have acquired additional properties, item 2 is specific to just two parcels being combined. Can we just modify that to say that the properties owned by Grace Church shall be combined for zoning compliance? I mean, I have the parcel number that we could add, or we could just say in general the parcels, the properties owned by Grace Church shall be combined. The one that's on Bellflower isn't really an issue right at the moment, but though...
Ms. Zeman? Probably identifying the specific permanent parcel number would be best.
So in addition to the two that are listed, the additional parcel is 16C073-0-00-017-0. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to combine the other parcel, and maybe we wait on that, just because nothing's happening, but I think the other one, because that will also affect the buffer, so that would be the only one, that would be the only recommended change.
Add that parcel to number two.
Number two.
Did you get that? Do you have a motion?
Move to approve with the A conditions, with the amendment of condition number two.
Second?
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. So the building addition itself, do you want to speak about that a little bit?
Sure. So your question was about what are they doing with the existing building on the inside, correct? Okay, the, right now, for this project, they don't plan on doing anything there, but there are long-term sketches I made as far as converting that at some point to Sunday School classrooms and things like that, but that's not going to be part of this project unless more money is provided.
Okay, but no daily school, no Monday through Friday school?
Nothing like that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
So we just got some new color images here. I'm trying to look at the old black and whites. Why don't you just tell me what the difference is?
Okay, the only, they're exactly the same.
Hold on, I think we're drifting into number seven here.
I thought we were going into number seven.
Let's just do the building addition, is there anything on...
Oh, that, you did vote on the building addition, I think it is architectural review.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Architecture review.
Okay, the only difference between the black and white and the colored is to the color, I added color, and the, I also added one elevation from the courtyard, and I also tried to enhance that optional connector as well, because there was some concern about that not blending with the existing architecture, which is that area over to the right there with that hip roof, which is one of the main entrances right there. And that, the church would like to have that connector, but if money is, comes up short, they might defer that.
This is, I feel like one of our legs are over the rail again. We can't approve an option, we can approve a proposal. So are you proposing with or without the connector? Because if we propose an option, then we don't know what we've approved.
Okay, if we propose with the connector, and then we decided that they couldn't afford it, we can come back.
Come back.
Okay, so...
And say, we're making an adjustment.
Yeah, let's approve it with the option, and then we should know when the, at some point, if money's going to be available for that, then we can come back.
I've noticed two changes in the elevations. On the, on the north elevation, at the east end, it went from a two-story part of the building to a one-story part of the building, from the black and whites. You have a little tree there.
There was never two stories. It, there was the appearance of two stories because we created a false window, which would be like a spandrel glass.
Three windows.
Take windows.
Oh, so it's just, you had a higher space, you just brought it down.
Right, we just lowered the space, there's no...
And then the original black and whites showed that the mechanical equipment was shielded from sight.
Right, right now, I didn't like putting the rooftop units on the high roof, so what I'm proposing is putting them on the lower roof, and those walls that form that lower section on the north elevation, those are going to be about four or five-foot-high parapets. So we're going to make those as high as they need to be to shield the rooftop units.
And the requirement is from the city that they be one foot above the top of the units?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, you've responded to that. Okay, so we're proposing with the connector. I don't have any other questions.
Anything from administration? Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Just to clarify, that we're, you're approving the resubmitted plan, is that the, was there a change, because there was a change on that roof line?
The latest one here is what we're submitting.
So we want to note that it's the, that it's the architectural plan submitted on August 18th.
Okay, yes. Oh, that's what, yeah. Is that, should that be a condition?
I guess it can be.
Well, let's just make it a condition, so there's not confusion, that we're reviewing. The third condition would be reviewing the plans issued the 18th of August.
Mr. Chairman, and when we voted on the previous building addition, we didn't say it was Option 2, so can we include that somehow in this section, or...
Joe?
Joe?
I thought the motion did reference Option 2, but your recollection's probably better than mine at this point.
I don't know if it's better than that.
That was Mr. Crocker, do you recall saying that?
Did not, we just, we just modified Condition 2, which was talked about the different parcels, I didn't do Options 2.
Just clarify the record, that approval, just, and perhaps just go down the dais as though it's a motion, you know, that that, to clarify the record that that included Option, that that was, that that motion pertained to Option 2.
Everyone, starting at George?
Sure.
I agree, Option 2.
Option 2.
Option 2?
Yes.
Option 2.
Option 2.
So I'll entertain a motion on the architectural review.
With three conditions.
And the third one being?
Referencing the drawings of the 18th of August.
Second?
Jackie, please call the roll.
Ms. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.